The meeting will now come to order. We are now holding the August meeting of the Fayette County School Corporation's Board of School Trustees. Will you join me in a salute to our American flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we are pleased to have with us Doug Fishesher, who is going to be making a presentation. So Doug, I'll turn this over to you.
Okay, thank you Ralph. I'm Doug Fishesher, the Executive Director of the Foundation at the Hospital, and as you well know, we did a little corporate sponsorship, or a little corporate thing with the school system this year, in bringing Willie Robertson from Duck Dynasty to Connersville. And we worked with your group, FFA, and the Key Club, and Chantel Cartwright, and some of the folks from the school system. We had a great day, June 15th. And just want to say thank you to the school system. Obviously, the Foundation and the Hospital are very appreciative of the efforts and the time that everyone put in for a great day. So, I've got some checks here that I want to present to Randy Judd, and also some of the scholarship finalists, or the finalists, the people from the Key Club. So with that, I'll have Randy come up and present some of the envelopes, Phil.
Awesome.
I appreciate it, Randy, thank you.
From the Foundation and the Hospital, we appreciate all the efforts, and we look forward to working with everyone in the future. And it was a great time and great thing, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
I would like to say that it was a great day. It was fun to see the people in Connersville fill that gymnasium, to see a guy with a beard. And they were just there to see him, and it was fun. And it says a lot about our community working together, the Hospital and the school corporation. I would like to personally thank Chantel. She put her life and soul into that project for many months.
Glad to hear it. The kids did a great job, not only in the weeks working up to it, but also, it was a pretty long day, a pretty full day, so we obviously appreciate that very much.
Do you want me to present these checks to the different organizations? Okay. We have several checks that go out. Some of them are scholarships that students are awarded from this money. First group that gets a check is Connersville FFA. This is Michelle Rexing, she's our first-year teacher. It's been a game, Navi, put in work right away.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
The FFA worked very hard to move equipment into the gymnasium, and move it out, and to help with organizing, all the things that needed to be gathered for this event. And I would also like to present another check to the Key Club. Who's going to?
The new president.
The new president. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Okay. We have, what, 12?
Yes.
There's 12 checks for scholarships, and I'm not sure all who's here, I'll just say all their names, and if you are here, you can come up. Zach Lucas. Whitney Wilkins. Drew Huffman. Some of these kids have already left for college, I don't know. Christopher Westerfield. Brooke Bischoff. Brandon Briscoe. Ashley Wiley. Allison Brown. And Allison McFarlane. That's it? Maybe we'll do this again someday.
I told Ralph, if he'll have dinner served and all that, we'll be glad to come back. Give him some more checks. I think I'm talking to the right guy. Thank you very much.
Thank you Doug, thank you for being here, and thank you students, and everybody that made it such a great event, all of you that put time and effort into it.
We'll do it again next year, we're working on that already.
All right, go for it. So you are welcome to stay with us, or if you find business boring, this would be, I guess, the time for you to exit.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Have a good night, guys.
Bye. Thank you for a few of you staying. I need a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Hilton.
I move to approve the agenda as submitted.
All right, the motion has been made, do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
All right, the motion is made, second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any patrons in the audience who have comments on agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on. Our consent agenda this evening covers approval of minutes from the regular business meeting of 7:09:13, the executive meeting of 7:09:13, the special session of 7:16:13, and the special session of 7:30:13. The personnel report that had retirements, resignation, lease of absence, et cetera, and approval of the July 2013 Claims Number 32399 through Number 32700. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, the motion has been made, do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
And the second has been made, is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. We'll now move into the action items. Our first is personnel report, Dr. Bayer.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. Dr. Hodges, members of the board, we have several persons for your consideration this evening. First off, on certified staff, Christopher Bloom, physical education teacher at Grandview in Maplewood, Suzanne Brown, English teacher at the high school, Andrea Fudge, earth-space science at the high school, Michelle Rexing, agriculture teacher at the high school, and Shannon, pre-hire guidance counselor at the high school effective August 12. Support staff members, Emily Bell, educational assistant at CHS, Danielle Johnson, custodian Eastview and CMS, Jim Levi, educational assistant at the careers center. Extracurricular, Julie Bell, JV basketball coach, Darryl Drew, swim co-coach, along with Jennifer Getz, co-coach swim at the CMS, Clay Hurd, and Dennis Perkins, both as co-coordinator football coaches at CMS. Ashley Mitchell, JV cheerleading coach, CHS, Erin Wright, our varsity boys and girls swim coach, and Ann Shannon, varsity girls soccer coach. Those persons for your consideration this evening, Mr. Burchett.
Do I hear a motion that we accept the personnel report?
I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Hilton.
If we notify Lincoln that we were going to take the one teachers already under contract...
We had several discussions with Mr. Hilton, who was aware.
Okay.
Actually, I called the superintendent to inform him, we were taking one, he said, "Hold on, I think we're taking one of yours."
Yes.
And so, we kind of did a swap. He was teaching earth-space science there, is that the class?
Science, yeah.
Science class, and so they took our science teacher, and so, yes. But that's one of the things we try to do, is to communicate early on, and let area schools know what may happen. Some let us know, but I just think it's a courtesy. Steve does a nice job, and between the two of us, we try to...
Particularly that close to...
Pardon?
They run a contract, and already within a week, well, they're...
Right. I'm not sure they started as early as we did, but as soon as we made that call, I called the superintendent, explained things to him, and...
Thank you.
Okay.
I may re-approve the personnel report, Mr. President.
Okay, the motion has been made to approve the personnel report, do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second to the motion, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Board, before we move on, I'd like to follow up on some comments I made in the Friday letter in regards to Grandview, and let you know more specifically what we're thinking. And, let's see, one of the things, Mr. Hilton, just to follow up, I think statute says that, is it, let's see, August the 15th, or something like that, that people are entering contracts, and there's some statutory language there, and with schools starting as early as they seem to be starting, I don't know if they'll rearrange that or not. What I'm giving you is a copy of enrollments in the corporation as of today. If you look down at Grandview, you'll see that we have a second grade enrollment, and second grade of 56, and third grade of 57. And as I try to explain, those four classrooms are some of the smallest classrooms, not some of the other smallest classrooms we have in the school corporation. And as we look at that building, we only have one available classroom to do something with that class. Mrs. Schlichty is here, we've had conversations with her, Dr. Riki's been involved with that, I believe Mrs. Schlichty's had some conversation with her teachers. And what we're looking at is hiring a certified teacher to provide support in mathematics instruction, and to provide support in language arts instruction. They'll be pulling groups out of those classrooms, going into that available classroom, we've worked on schedules, we think we have everything arranged, I think we have support from everybody that this will work. Your approval will be noted at our next meeting, when we have a recommendation of a teacher to bring to you, but I thought if you had some concerns before we go further, we could talk those out today.
So just for clarification, that's coming out of the second grade, that would be going to this extra teacher, is that...
Second and third.
Second and third.
This teacher will be teaching mathematics to second graders and to third graders, and then language arts for second and third, and I don't know if we totally broken out the line.
Not at the same time.
No, that's right.
Morning will be second grade, afternoon will be all third grade. Something like that, yeah.
So they'll be teaching all math then, or just certain groups?
Math and reading. In the morning, this new teacher would have a class of about 19 second graders in, no, excuse me, 19 third graders in reading and math, those core subjects, which would then provide more distribution, smaller class size for core instruction. And in the afternoon, this same teacher would have second graders for reading and math. So that 90-minute reading block and the hour-long math period, they would have smaller class size for that instruction with a licensed teacher.
I guess the other question that I would ask, okay, so the regular teachers like Hill and Tipton, would they be teaching math?
Absolutely.
So all three of them?
To the kids that remain in their classroom, and they would have roughly about 19 to 20 students in their rooms, for those core subjects as well. Again, remember, those core subjects are the ones that are tested on ISTEAP, and certainly in third grade, I grade three, so we want to make sure we have strong instruction, and the smaller class sizes, I think, will certainly help. It'll reduce the number of, say, reading groups that they have, to a more manageable level.
Catherine, will this occur in the third classroom then, I presume?
Indeed, yes.
Dr. Riki and I were there one day, and, I mean, another option is to hire some additional instructional assistants in there, but when we were in there, there were already three adults in the classroom with 28 or 29 kids, and as I say, it's a smaller classroom, it was pretty crowded already. So we thought that instructionally, it made more sense to try to find a way to get our groups to a more manageable size, and this seems to be an option that...
It looks like second grade is close, so far as student count goes.
We, yes, we have closed them at this point in time, we were not accepting any new enrollees, but we still have...
Can't fit any more bodies in those rooms, let alone, you know, conducive to small group instruction, and sitting on the floor for read-alouds, and it's a very crowded situation.
Well, where I was going was, is so far as class size, if you're thinking about changing class size, you really, we don't have enough rooms, classrooms, I mean, if you've got 56 students in second grade, and 57 in third grade, so...
You'd have to choose.
Yeah.
Were these large groups last year, or are there quite a few new students this year?
They were, our surprise was first grade. We were anticipating 44, and we ended up with 55, so...
Actually, the first draft of this would have shown three second-grade teachers, and just two first-grade teachers, but at some point, it looked like first grade was going to be larger than second and third, and so, we moved one of those teachers to first grade, and then we had more students show up at second and third grade, so... So if you have any other questions, we happen to answer those, if not, we'll move forward and get a teacher in that situation here as quickly as we can.
How would we break the kids, students up? Would there be a certain group?
We've talked about a lot of different ways, and I don't know if Dr. Riki's, if you guys have come to a decision on how that's going to be, or if it's going to be flexible grouping, or how that's going to work.
Yeah, I think we want to, we would like to use flexible grouping if we need to, but I think when we talked further, the idea being is, in a class of 28 students, you potentially have probably six different learning levels, you know, groups such, and the idea would be, is if we're going to create a third section, to minimize how many different learning levels in each of the three classes. So if we could somehow look at their academics, and look at it some kind of, we don't want a homogeneous group, but at the same time, if we can go from six to maybe three different learning levels, and each of those teachers will have three different learning levels, it does allow for some more quality instruction and differentiation. So there will be some strategic and logic, haven't even had an opportunity to think that part through, because we didn't know if this was going to be permissible.
So it wouldn't be like an advanced type of...
If there's an opportunity for one of the three sections to be of higher learning, we're going to have, somewhere, there's going to be the higher achievers in one of the classrooms, and maybe two of the classrooms. But it would be ideal to try to do some clustering or grouping to allow for that.
If there are other questions, we'll proceed, thank you for letting me slip that in.
Okay. All right, moving on to the next action item, we have permission to advertise the 2014 budget, the 2014-15 bus replacement plan, and the 2014-16 capital projects plan. Jane Kellam-Tolliver, glory's yours.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. I can place this this evening, except for finance committee members, you will find a manila folder that includes the budget documents. The first three pages of that are the advertisements that we need to make for the budget, the capital projects plan, and for the bus replacement plan. So those first three items are what we're asking permission to advertise this evening. The rest of it's for your review. At the September meeting, we will be having our budget hearing, where the community is allowed to ask questions, as well as the board members of the room. If you remember, at the end of July, we had our budget workshop, where I shared a lot of the information with you related to the budget, including the student count that I had used for budgeting purposes, which was 3,560. This information that I shared this evening compares where we are now to that budget number, and we currently have 40 and a half less students than what I budgeted for. When you translate that into revenue, that's a little under $244,000 less revenue than we have budgeted, than I have budgeted in 2014. Now, every day, these numbers change, more and more kids are showing up. You might ask, how do we end up with a half a student? Well, if you recall, kindergarteners are counted as a half, not a full, ADM, and then we receive a separate grant funding for our full-day kindergarteners. If you look at the columns from September of 2012, which is the first column, compared to August of 2013, we're down 100, about 120, not quite 120, students from the same time last year. I'm sure hoping we start to level out before long. We are only down about 53 from the February count, and if you recall, at the budget workshop, I talked about how both of those count days are going to drive our funding now. Instead of it all being on the September funding, half the year will be on the September, and half of the year will be on the February. So if we continue to lose between fall and spring, this deficit of 244,000 could increase for that second half of the year, if we would lose another 50 students in February. So, now, the good news is, in the budget, there was also a cash balance. I did not commit all of our revenues to being spent. It just about offsets this, but I am hopeful that we'll see more and more students show up here before long, particularly at the high school, they're trying to track down some kids and identify them, to get them perhaps back enrolled in school. So, but tonight's part is the second step, and that is seeking your permission to advertise.
Okay. Mr. Hilton?
Mr. President, if I understand right, 200,000 can be covered with the balance that you had?
Yeah. It'll be all right, I'm hoping the number will go up, and we'll get a little bit closer to where we were, but I'm not overly concerned at this point, because we did build in cash reserve in that proposed budget, when you look through the documents. Yeah. And you'll have an opportunity, that's why they're provided to you this evening, so you can review those documents, and ask more and more questions at the September meeting, when we actually have the hearing on it, if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do I hear a motion to grant permission to advertise these three items?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move to grant permission to advertise.
Mr. Hilton has made the motion, do I hear a second?
I will second.
Okay, Mr. Hunt. Any further discussion? All right, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we need to recommend approval of the professional services agreement with Schmidt and Associates, and Ms. Tolliver, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. I am pleased to report that our qualified zone academy bonds have sold, and they were sold with 0% interest, so we will only be paying the principal back over the next three years. We are working on the finishing details, the closing is actually Thursday of next week. A part of that project was redoing some piping for the HVAC, and underground piping replacement at the high school. And so, before you this evening, is a request to enter into a contractual agreement with Schmidt and Associates, who is an architectural firm out of Indianapolis that we've used on many projects before, and Bob has a good comfort level with them. We would like to enter into this agreement, so we can be working this fall, and be able to bid for that project late winter, so that we would be able to proceed with the project just as soon as school is out. So this evening, for your consideration, is approving us entering into the architectural agreement with Schmidt and Associates.
Are they only going to be considered?
They are. We've had a very good working relationship with them. Bob likes partnering with Lenny Brim, they're representative for us, and so, after discussions with the finance committee, they indicated that we were all right to proceed, and receive a quote from them, and then bring it to the full board for their consideration.
We've had really good results from them, is my reason, right?
Yeah, and you keep using an architect until you don't have good results with them. I mean, that's been my past experience, but we have, and Bob has a real good comfort level with Lenny, and Lenny has a good comfort level with Bob, and I think, you know, that that's important, so...
All right, do you have any questions at this time? If not, I'll entertain a motion to recommend the approval of the Schmidt and Associates.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion for the approval of the professional service agreement with Schmidt and Associates.
Okay, Mr. Boyd has made the motion, do I hear a second? Mr. Jones? Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And the motion carries. Now, we need to grant permission to proceed with the school technology advancement account application. Again, Ms. Tolliver?
Thank you. If you recall, at last month's quorgini, I had shared with you that we had just received the application documents to apply for a school technology advancement loan. And I spoke about asking for forgiveness instead of permission, and then bringing it to you this month for the actual permission, because the deadline for that grant submission was before this board meeting. So this evening, we didn't have any objections to proceeding with that last month, so now I'm asking your permission to continue proceeding with that, and if it's not the board's pleasure that we proceed with it, I will contact the Department of Education and ask that our application be withdrawn. If you recall, this would replace debt that we have rolling off mid-year next year, the payments would start, we would not be increasing the debt obligation of the community, we will be keeping it relatively low.
Do I hear a motion to proceed with the school technology advancement account application?
Mr. President? I move to proceed with the application.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton, do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Mr. Taylor? Any questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have some policy updates, Dr. Hodges?
According to package, we have copies of policy 5.12 and 5.08. As I indicated, we did make some modifications to 5.12. Within the policy, we had some conflict as to when certain deadlines were, we've corrected that, really the substance of the policy... Really, the substance of the policy remains the same as it was during first reading. And on 5.08, am I doing that backwards?
5.08 is just one word.
Five point, yes, 5.08, it remains as is from first reading. So, this being second reading, if there are no questions or objections, I would recommend you approve both policies.
Do we have any questions or concerns at this time? Do I hear a motion that we approve these policy changes?
Is this a motion for both the changes?
We could do it either way you want.
512 and 58.
We can do it all in one motion, or you can break them out if you choose to do that.
Let's do it all. I move that we update, do the update and final reading for policy 5.12, transfers in 5.08, non-resident.
Thanks, Mr. Taylor. Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Okay, Mr. Spurley. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we need to affirm the 2014 Support Staff Employee of the Year, Dr. Hodges.
This year's Support Staff Employee of the Year has been a health assistant within the corporation for 13 years. She can best be described as a little woman with a huge heart. She cares about everyone at Fayette Central, from students to staff members. First, with students, she goes the extra mile to provide students with cough drops for sore throats, Tylenol for headaches, bandages for bumped knees at recess, and daily medications as needed. She's even been known to drive a student's house to transport the medicine to school if the parent doesn't drive. She is there, if a child needs clean clothes, their hair combed, or a tear too dried, she is there. She has been known to buy tennis shoes, socks, and other items to use at school or even to give to a child in need. Our staff also depends on her. She is always on call because we never know what the next moment may bring. There have been more than one time that she has called the unit for a staff member who has collapsed at school. Her calm demeanor is appreciated as she sat with the mother of a staff member whose daughter had been in an accident on the way to work, and the way she left school so another staff member wouldn't be alone as she raced to the hospital to be with her husband. She has certainly been there during our happy times together as a staff, as well as our stressful times. She truly cares about the individuals she comes in contact with at Fayette Central, and it is so much more than a job to her. It's my pleasure this evening to recommend to you that you affirm Sue Mitchell as our 2014 Support Staff Employee of the Year.
Do I hear a motion to, I guess, select? She's already been selected and approved, I guess, or whatever, affirm it, Sue Mitchell as the Support Staff Employee of the Year. Mr. Jones makes that motion? Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
No.
Mr. Taylor? Seconds? All right. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? And the motion carries.
He asked for discussion.
Is there any? All right.
Well, I'd just like to say that we've got a lot of great people out there, and any number of them could have won, and I'm glad Sue won. But we do have a lot of, a lot of dedicated folks out there in the classrooms, and we're all grateful for it. Thanks, Ralph. Now, you can move on.
All right, we're at the place where we have public comments. Do we have any public comments from the audience? Seeing none, we move on to the superintendent's discussion groups reports. Are there any? Seeing none. Principals, directors, reports?
Good evening. I just want to make the board aware and invite them to our back-to-school evening, which will be August 22nd, next Thursday, from 6 till 7. And at that time, our parents and students will be meeting with their teams of teachers as a meet and greet, and for the teachers to have a chance to share with parents the expectations and invite them for hot dogs and drinks. So, please come and enjoy just browsing and meeting some of our teams, if you haven't had a chance to do that, next Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any others? Okay, Director of Personnel report?
Thank you again, Mr. Burchett. Just a couple of items. I just want to thank the board for their support of allowing our employees to start prior to confirmation. We always try to bring those ahead, many times we do, but with the start of school and everything, it's been kind of a harried experience to get everybody aboard and in those classrooms, and we appreciate the fact that you allowed us to do that and confirm and follow in the back, so greatly appreciate it. Our transportation and food service folks are off to a great start as well. Jane informed me that on between, night before school started and the start of the next school day, first school day, that she handled 131 changes. And that's a lot, to get everybody aboard and get them in the right place, then lose a child, everybody got home, and the time was great. So, she was harried and a little anxious in some cases, but it all worked out very well, and their team did a great job. Also, food service is off to a great start with the meals. Again, and you may have read the article in the newspaper or over the radio that we served around 13,000 meals to students this summer off the truck, and 26,000 altogether, so that was quite a, about 17% increase over last year. So, it's great to get out there and meet the needs of our students during this summer. And finally, we have now hired all of our 40 new teachers, except for one, or one to go. But other than that, I want to thank the principals and their teams of teachers for working collaboratively with me to make all that happen. They worked very diligently and took some time during the summer to, when they might have been out to the lake or the beach, or the pool, or wherever, on the golf course, but they worked really diligently during the summer, and I appreciate their extra efforts in getting all those people hired, so great job. We are following up with our new teachers on the 21st, a week from tomorrow, to kind of see where our new folks are. And after the first couple of weeks of being in the trenches, any concerns they have, we'll be addressing those on the 21st, so, thank you. That's it.
Good, thank you, sir. Director of Finance report?
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. This evening, I'd like to share a little bit about the capital projects. We had a very short but busy summer. Completed projects include the CHS locker room. If you recall, that was a two-year project. It's now finished and looks very nice. Randy can testify to that.
Very proud of it.
The Maplewood window project for the library and the computer lab was completed. A storage building was built at Everton. The door replacement project at the Career Center and the high school has been completed. The CHS courtyard walkways have been redone. Grand View's classroom doors, we've had various carpeting projects throughout this corporation, new restroom partitions at Grand View and Everton. We have a few projects that have yet to be completed. Some of the high school windows are not completed yet. However, all of these projects I'm going to speak about now will be completed outside of the school day. The contractors understood that going in to the project. The air handling units for the Eastview and Frazee Computer Labs are not complete. The air handling units for Fayette Central, carpeting for Frazee's hallway was ordered late, but will be completed. Instead of an awning over the steps like we currently have at the Resource Center, we are going to have a permanent roof built. Bob has worked with Chad Friend from Friendly Contracting, who we've done business with before, and he's given us a quote, and they've developed an idea. So, that's a less expensive approach and should last longer than the awning. We're still working on the security installation. CEI is doing that for us, but they were tied up for a majority of the summer with the wireless project at the high school. So, they'll dig in on that security installation this fall. Let's see, some projects that were completed with the use of emergency capital projects, the door replacements at Fayette Central were deemed to be a security and safety issue, so those were completed using emergency capital projects allocation. And additionally, at the middle school, we had two of the compressors on their air conditioning units go out, so we replaced those with emergency money. We replaced one of those last year, so now three of the four have been replaced. It's not in an ideal area. It sits down and is surrounded on three sides by the building, and then there's a gate on the side that faces the hospital, so it does not get good airflow through there. So, that original design wasn't very good, and it causes those compressors to overheat. I mean, they have sprinkling system that they spray on continually to try to keep them cool when we're in air conditioning mode. With the week-long fall break this year, we're going to squeeze in a couple of more projects. We are going to replace the cafeteria and kitchen windows at Maplewood. When Mrs. Casaro came in and talked to the finance committee about her capital projects needs for next year, this was really high on the list. It's kind of cold in that cafeteria area, and the windows were in need of replacement. In the 2013 capital projects for Maplewood, we had budgeted for a water softener replacement. Bob said that can flip to next year, and we'll move the windows into this year and be able to complete that project over fall break. Pricing's comparable, we've already got the quote information, so we'll be moving forward with that. In addition to that, there are some, a few more doors at the high school that need to be replaced, so we're going to proceed with that. It will be paid from with the QZAP proceeds, and those will be done over fall break. One last item I have, the delivery truck, or the delivery vehicle that Lonnie uses for delivering the mail and then supplies from the maintenance is getting very old, and we are spending quite a bit of money maintaining it. So, we will be proceeding, looking at a Ford E150 cargo van that is on state bid, making a purchase of that. Our government pricing for that is about a 35% discount. So, over the next week or so, we'll probably be ordering a new van for Lonnie unless I get some objection here that we need to not be doing that, but this is just about shot. So, and that's all I have.
What do they do with the old van you drive?
Well, they'll probably keep it as a backup, but eventually they may put it in the auction. I mean, it's rusting down, that very bottom panel on the sides are starting to rust out.
He uses that a lot, then?
He does. You know, they've worked on the transmission a couple of times in the last two years, and just some different issues. And it's not, it's not good when he has to work out of a truck, it's just not, doesn't really fit the needs for the mail delivery system, so.
Okay, thank you. Moving along now to the Assistant Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Burchett. I just want to inform the board that just yesterday, we were given notice that about this time of year, you'd be hearing about school improvement plans and some of the things moving forward. The I-Step data is supposed to be to us at the end of August. That's the promise. And then, with that being said, they're going to extend the time for the school improvement plans till November 1. So, we will be bringing information and summaries of those in the October board meeting, so you'll get to finally hear about how we did last year and, and some of the resolutions and how we're moving forward with some of the plans. So, just an FYI with that. And a second thing, I wanted to just put out, you know, a shout-out, thank you, a public thank you to the Miller Building. There were two instances at the beginning of the year where they were very gracious to allow us to use their space, one being with our new teachers with 39. We didn't fit in this room very well, or even the Career Center, and one of the days was at the Miller Building, and they gave us their facilities to utilize that space. And we also needed to do it with, the beginning of the year, August 6th, we had a consultant come in, work with our new literacy program, and we wanted to, all of our elementary and our special ed, to get the opportunity to get some beginning training. And so, we utilized their gym as well as their main area there, and their audio, and they set up for us, and it was all for free. And we just asked. And so, that was just very nice of them to do that for us, and it would have been very difficult to hold either one of those in our Resource Center or our other facilities for the size of the things. I just wanted to thank them.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's report?
Board at your table this evening, you'll, you should find a schedule of open houses. You're more than welcome to attend as many of those as you can. They don't all serve food, some do, some don't. Take your chances and see what happens. One of the things that we've done the last few years is have some giveaways for people who come to registration and send their student on the very first day of school. And this year, we were giving away Kindle Fires, three of them, Kindle Fire HD. We gave three of those away, or we'd like to, one to an elementary parent, one to a middle school parent, one to a high school parent. And the winners are Tanya LaFollette for elementary, Charity Moore from the middle school, and Jessica Ross from the high school. We'll be making contact with them and making sure that they get their Kindle Fire HD. I don't, I don't know that I need to say a lot. I think opening day, I said probably enough on the A to F grading system. I think you may have heard recently that the State Superintendent of Public Instruction is working on a new system, A to F system. That actually was in statute, and by November 15th, we're supposed to have a new plan in place. Not sure what that's going to look like, especially in light of the problems with the I-Step test, but that's moving, moving forward. It's very disappointing. What happened to the old system, the way that was applied, I can tell you, and I think I did share with you that, was it a year ago, that we were going to several meetings trying to understand exactly how that A to F system worked. A lot of concern about how do we, how can we explain to our parents and our constituents how that's all applied? And we really didn't get clear answers on that. I do like what I hear Superintendent Rith saying, I've said it many times, we're really taking two dissimilar things, somewhat related, achievement and growth, and trying to meld that into one grade and say that that's good. So, really not sure what she's going to bring out, but we are looking forward to that. Very pleased with the start of school. We were able to visit every building on the first day. We're in, or peaked in almost every classroom. We didn't quite make the high school. We did get in the high school and walk through some of that, but we didn't get all the way through. As I've shared, it's just, it's just amazing to me sometimes how quickly students come in, they get settled, and they get right down to work. That's a credit to our teachers for being organized. As I said, if you drive past the school most of the time in the summertime, you'll see cars out in the parking lot, people in there getting ready for the start of school. They don't have to do that. We're very fortunate, we have a dedicated staff who's willing to do that. And it shows, it shows in getting off to a smooth start, and it shows in the achievement gains that we have made, and I don't ever want to take that for granted. And I think with that, that's all I have.
Okay, we have the good of the cause. Does anyone have any comment they'd like to make? Mr. Hilton?
Well, Mr. President, I'm not quite clear. I've been trying to clarify the 28 versus 30 hours that we cut back, 28 and 30.
You're talking about the educational assistance.
28 and 3/4 hours?
28.75 versus 32.5 for the six-and-a-half-hour people.
Right.
Or?
Pardon?
Or?
Well, it's because of the Affordable Health Care Act and the penalties associated with having people working 30 or more hours and not offering health insurance to them. The fines that go along with that, as we shared, if we stayed the way we were and did absolutely nothing, we'd be looking at fines in excess of $900,000 a year. And if we did offer health insurance to these folks, there's a maximum contribution that they could make, and at the time we ran those figures, it would cost the school corporation around $400,000 to provide health insurance for that. And those costs did not seem to be sustainable for us over time, and in talking with the finance committee, a decision was made that we would, we would go back hours. around $400,000 to provide health insurance for that, and those costs did not seem to be sustainable for us over time, and in talking with the finance committee, a decision was made that we would go back hours. And we did talk to building principals, and there are some cases where it didn't make sense to cut those hours back based on the needs of students, and so not everyone was cut back to that, and we still, even today, we had some conversation with our life skills class, I think they had four instructional assistants. Last spring, we allowed two to stay at the regular hours, reduced two. The building principal said because of the needs of students, she would like to have one of those assistants restored back to that 32 hours or whatever it was, and we granted permission to do that. So we're trying to balance the needs of students and try to be fiscally responsible with things that are coming down the line.
And seeing somebody's going to be at that desk even after school.
One of the things that we asked principals to do was to look at schedules, and we gave them the flexibility to, wherever they had the most need, to maybe start people earlier, to have them come in later, so they can stay later, or take a longer break in the middle of the day to try to figure out when they need their services the most. I don't know, I don't know if Dr. Barrett can say if we have all three of those options out there, we threw all of those out there, but I'm not really sure how those were adjusted.
Each school and principals work with their staff to make it feasible and doable, so they're working hard, and I don't know if there's any two schools maybe doing it exactly alike, but students' needs are being met.
So, I guess the answer is, there is somebody available, they're the closest school in every building.
We've given the principals the flexibility to schedule them, and if there's a need there, then they have opportunities to get that covered.
With their staff?
Yes.
Anyone else good of the cause? I would just like to say a special thanks to our Chamber of Commerce for the meal that they provide for our new teachers, it's really very nice, and what a great welcoming thing that they do for our new teachers, welcoming them to our school system and to our community, so a big thank you, Chamber of Commerce. Anyone else? Do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made, second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And meeting is adjourned.